Council workshop for May twentieth, two thousand and twenty-five. We have the roll call, please.
Councilmember Yonker.
Here.
Councilmember Barry.
Here.
Councilmember Goodman.
Present.
Councilmember Heggestad.
Here.
Councilmember Beard.
Present.
Vice Mayor Houston.
Here.
Mayor Orsborn.
Present. Thank you very much. Item, workshop items to, two A is presentation and discussion regarding the Parks and Rec, Recreation Master Plan and the final recommendations by Kinley Horn and Associates. And to kick it off, we'll have Miranda Gomez, Community Services Director.
Evening.
Evening.
Okay, well, good evening, Mayor, members of the council. I am Miranda Gomez, your Community Services Director, and with me I have Bob Weiser, our Deputy Director in Community Services, and also Sean Wasney from Kinley Horn. We are excited to present to you the draft Parks and Recreation Master Plan. This plan comes to you after hundreds of hours of work from the department, our consultants at Kinley Horn, and the community who has provided a vast amount of input. So the plan itself is north of five hundred pages, and tonight, I thought we'd just do a page-by-page turn, so buckle up. No, we, we've extrapolated what we believe is the most important pieces to discuss with you, which will include the goals of the plan, an overview of the community input and stakeholder outreach results, and then how those efforts then create the program and amenity priorities, which we will share this evening. Further on, we'll discuss the level of service analysis and development standards, and all of this information compiled, develops the plan themes and recommendations for the, for the plan for the future. If there's anything that you feel like we haven't touched on enough, please just let us know, and we're happy to discuss. So just a quick reminder that this master plan is a long-range plan. It's a ten-year plan. It identifies key initiatives and implement, implementation strategies for staff to use as we plan for the future, and it provides a roadmap that we will use as we prioritize future projects. The plan is not a capital improvement plan, so you won't see project-specific plans within the document looking at specific parks or properties, and it's not a funding plan, although we did explore funding options and priorities with residents through our statistically valid survey. The plan is a policy document. It sets kind of minimum park standards. It's not regulatory. It's not in, it's not developed, we're not discussing development code this evening. At the onset of the plan development, we identified the goals that you see in front of you as what we were looking to accomplish through the plan, the first being to create a comprehensive and compelling vision and direction for Parks and Recreation in Buckeye. We're also looking for it to propose and explore various approaches for accommodating growth while considering the fiscal impact. We want to strategically identify gaps in service and prioritize future improvements, gain an understanding of current and desired levels of service, understand and explore potential partnership opportunities that exist, and evaluate our current operations and maintenance practices with an aim to generate long-term sustainability for the department. So to begin tackling those goals, we first conducted community and stakeholder outreach, which Bob is going to cover with you.
Good afternoon. Again, we wanted to make sure that we made it convenient for residents to provide input into the master plan, so we used a lot of different methodologies to make it convenient for them. So the first thing that we did is we created an interactive project website. That was www.planbuckiparks.com. That way, residents, whether they were at home, watching TV, in between commercials, could provide their input. So there was a survey online that folks could fill out. There was a couple of interactive exercises where they could prioritize amenities and programs. There was also a Share Your Big Idea where people could provide what their thoughts were. But we also issued a statistically valid survey. So we worked with our consultant, and they selected four thousand random addresses within Buckeye, and we received five hundred and twenty-four responses back on that statistically valid survey, so it was about a thirteen percent response rate. And so our goal was to hit ten percent, so we exceeded that. We also did two rounds of public meetings, and so we went to the different communities in Buckeye to garner input into the plan. So the first set of meetings was really just to hear from residents, what did they want to see as we continue to grow Parks and Recreation in Buckeye. So we had meetings up in Festival, Tartesso, Sundance, Downtown, Verado. So again, we wanted to make it convenient for residents to provide input, but we also went to where people were. So we kicked off the process for the Parks and Recreation Master Plan at the Buckeye Air Fair. We were also at the Spring Celebration, and then we were also at a movie or concert in the park. And it was really interesting to see the differences in input that we received between the Buckeye Air Fair and the Spring Celebration, a little bit of different demographics, but really good input, too. And in the fall, we partnered up with the City Manager's Office, but also the Fire Department. So again, we had gone out to the residents to talk about the GEO bond, but also the Fire Department was working on their strategic plan. And so we combined efforts and went on a roadshow for that. And again, we went to those same communities just for us to, to tell residents what the recommendations were from the master plan and to have them to review and validate those results.
Bob, can I interrupt just real quick? You've used it twice, and Miranda used it once, so it's clearly a buzzword for tonight, statistically valid survey.
Yes.
Can you explain that just a little bit?
Sure. Yeah, so we, we had two different surveys that we used. One was a non-statistically valid survey. So that one was, again, one that was just posted to the project website. Anyone could fill it out. So there was no parameters about who or who couldn't fill it out. Versus the statistically valid survey was a random sample of Buckeye residents. So again, those four thousand postal addresses that received that. And again, we were aiming for ten percent. We got thirteen thousand. So that was a good representative, representation of Buckeye residents that provided that feedback and input, which then made it statistically valid.
Okay. Okay, great.
Any questions?
Yeah, I'm gonna use that moving forward, and I wanna...
It's a mouthful, statistically valid survey.
Thank you, Bob.
Sure.
Uh, no, five hundred and twenty-four responses back, and thirteen percent. Yes, yep. I guess that is. Teams message, yeah, yep. We also wanted to ensure that we were working with different stakeholders in Buckeye. So again, we had small group sessions with city council. We also met with city management. We held a presentation to the Buckeye Youth Council and the Civic Institute. We also had two presentations to our Community Services Advisory Board, as well as the Planning and Zoning Commission. We wanted to make sure that we met with different department representatives, not only in community services, but throughout the city. And then we wanted to talk with our partners within different governmental organizations, whether that was here locally with Maricopa County, with the Maricopa County Parks and Recreation, and the Flood Control District of Maricopa County, but also at the state level with Arizona Game and Fish Commission. And then we also met with the Bureau of Land Management and U.S. Fish and Wildlife Services. We also know that the irrigation districts are strong, have a, there's a good opportunity to provide trails along the canals, and so we met with the different irrigation districts throughout Buckeye. We also met with the school districts, various nonprofits like the White Tank Mountains Conservancy, Buckeye Main Street Coalition, the Women's Club, and a Chamber of Commerce Business Connection. We also had two presentations to the Development Partners Group that's organized through the Development Services Department. We also met with the Terravallus Development Team, and then different youth sports organizations here in Buckeye. Well, here's an overall summary of the inputs that we received. So a total of four thousand three hundred and five inputs into the master plan. Again, you can see the five hundred and twenty-four statistically valid survey, another buzzword, over a thousand website surveys that were completed. Again, some of those other opportunities for people to weigh in on that, that planbuckiparks.com website with an interactive map comments to share your big idea, over almost two hundred and fifty participants in the focus group meetings, over eight hun, eighteen hundred votes whenever we went to the different community events, and they provided their votes on their priorities. And then, again, social media engagement at two hundred and thirty-seven, and that was people that liked, commented, or shared the post. Now Miranda is going to go into some of the results from the statistically valid survey.
There wasn't quite as much back and forth when we were gonna be sitting next to each other, so apologies on that. So Bob mentioned all the inputs that we received throughout the process, and I'm gonna start by reviewing some of the survey results. So knowing that Buckeye is unique in its delivery of parks and facilities, and being that we have so many master planned communities, we asked residents which organizations they use for recreation programs and facilities. And as you can see, the city of Buckeye programs and facilities are the most used, followed by homeowners associations in the neighboring cities. This slide, I'm gonna explain to you, so I know it's a little bit hard to see. It's got a lot of information. But this slide shows priorities for facilities based on a priority investment rating. So for this, you can think about it as a, as a balancing act of what you need versus what's most important to you. So we asked residents, what facilities do they feel like they need the most? And also asked them another question of which types of facilities do they feel like are the most important? And so although a lot of those answers tend to be pretty similar, it's not a one-to-one. So this chart takes those two questions and combines them for a priority investment rating. So you can see on this chart that Buckeye's highest priority investment rating is aquatic and pool facilities, fitness and exercise facilities, cultural centers for visual and performing arts, outdoor adventure activities, and indoor basketball and volleyball courts. There are a ton of medium priorities. I think that folks in Buckeye are excited for, for any type of recreational facility. And you can see at the bottom, I'm gonna point out that baseball and softball fields are at the high end of the low priority investment rating, and I'm gonna discuss that here a little bit in a few slides. This chart takes a look at that same priority investment rating, but with programs. So you can see the top is hobby and interest classes, fitness programs, events and festivals, art programs, art performances, facility, or family programming, and educational classes and lectures, and environmental education. Again, you see a ton there in the medium priority, and just a few with a low priority. This chart here takes a look at our program capacity, and I just grabbed kind of the top few. And so this chart takes a look at our program enrollment numbers versus their capacity over several years. And the reason that I think that this one was important to show you is you can take a look at our top capacity programs, and those are T-ball, baseball, and softball. And if you remember going back to the facility investment rating, those fields were lowest on our list. And so my point with this is that as we, as we continue to grow our system, it's gonna be important to not just get the input, but also look at the programs that people are using. And what I can predict is that as we start having to turn people away, so for example, we just rounded out our spring season, and for the first time in my memory, we had a hundred and twenty kids on a waitlist. So we had a hundred and twenty kids that we weren't able to accommodate in our program. As those numbers start growing, because we're not able to accommodate them, because we just simply don't have the fields to accommodate more kids, I think that you'll start seeing some of those priority investment rating numbers shift, because the programs and facilities are not available to our residents, and they're gonna be looking to get involved in them. So as we start looking at growing our system and, and building our future facilities, you know, taking looks at multiple data points are gonna be important. So we also asked our residents to indicate their support for each potential action that the city could take to improve its parks and recreation system. And you'll see that at the top of that list is to preserve open space and high-value natural resources. It was very, very, very common to hear from our residents. It was at the, at the top of every conversation, how much our residents value open space and our natural resources. From conversations and input, it's what brought them to Buckeye. It's what they love about Buckeye. It's what they value most about Buckeye, and it's what they're the most passionate about protecting.
Miranda, can I interrupt there? I find that when I'm talking to residents, open space is kind of defined differently, depending on the resident you're talking to. I think the vast majority would say that the open space they're talking about are the, the river areas, or the white tanks, or Buckeye Hills, or something like that. There are a lot of, there are a lot of people that think that the farms are open space, and, and the ag that's in and around us are, is open space, or the desert that is maybe privately owned is open space. Is, is there any drill down into those questions and kind of get some differentiation between what truly is open space that we can control, and what is open space that is private property that is likely not gonna be open space long term?
So not in the survey, but I can tell you just from the feedback that I, we received either from stakeholders, or just the conversation that we had. I think that folks, you're right. They, they like kind of just the wide-open space. So whether that's space that we can control or somebody else, I, I don't know that that registers for folks. But the city taking action to preserve that feel of some sort of wide-open space, I think, is important to them. And then the other comment that we heard a lot was the ability to connect those spaces. So I heard it from a ton of folks that were, that talked about the ability to jump on canal trails in the East Valley and ride it from here to there, and just how, how much they enjoyed that recreational outlet of, of hitting the trail and getting from one place to another, and their desire for the city to really take steps to be able to do that in the future. Lots of conversations around trails and connecting those spaces.
Okay. Thank you.
And then we also asked residents to rate their level of support for dedicated funding options that enable the preservation of open space development, and then also the development of parks, trails, and recreation facilities. So this could have been through revenue bonds, a dedicated sales tax, or some sort of similar initiative like a quality-of-life tax. Now, when we asked this question, the bond initiative was going to the voters, so we didn't drill down on any type of specifics of would you prefer a bond versus a quality-of-life tax versus, because we didn't wanna confuse our residents with what was coming up on their ballot. So we did stay pretty broad on this question, but you can see from the, from the results that seventy-seven percent of our residents were either somewhat supportive or very supportive of some type of action like that, and only five percent indicated that they were not supportive. And then this is, these next two slides are just from the Big Ideas boards that Bob mentioned as part of the outreach. So some of those big ideas I thought would be fun to, to share. And so some of the things that we heard was a new community pool, a park-like atmosphere along the canals, a rec center like Goodyear's, facilities for youth sports, instead of, instead of having to drive a place for concerts, and somebody actually offered to donate to get that started, an aquatic center like Goodyear's, indoor basketball courts, and a park ranger program. And, you know, the tentative budget is coming your way this evening, and a park ranger program is part of that package. So some of these things, you'll see us start to make progress on pretty quickly. So all of that information then kind of compiles and gets us to the program and amenity priorities. So again, the citywide amenities are listed there in order, with the first being an aquatic and pool center, fitness and exercise facilities, art performance, outdoor adventures, and so on. And then with programming, again, hobby and interest classes are at the top, fitness programs, special events and festivals, and arts programs. And specifically with programming, what this tells me is a lot of our department's resources, so whether that's staff time, programming, funding, those type of things are already concentrated in these top areas. So it tells us that we're on the right track. People are just looking for more than what we're offering right now. So if you recall, in our library master plan that was adopted last year, it was important for us to know and divide this feedback based on the area within the city of which the residents lived in. So we know that our resident needs and wants change based on where they live in Buckeye, based on available HOA amenities and demographics. So in other words, what's right for a resident in North Buckeye or Festival could be very different than what's right for a resident in East Buckeye or the Verado area. But you do see a lot of similarities across the city, which is interesting as well. So each area is broken down by their top five. You can see that art programs are what's most important for North Buckeye, West Buckeye, and Sun Valley Parkway, where the pickleball lessons and leagues for East Buckeye, Central Buckeye, and Historic Buckeye, and South Buckeye want some more water fitness classes. So again, as we go to develop programs for the future, this will help us, and us staff make informed decision about what's right in the various areas. And then similarly, we broke down the amenities by the planning areas as well. And again, you see a lot of the same types of results, but it is a little bit different, depending on where you're at. So indoor exercise facilities are walking and running tracks for North Buckeye, West Buckeye, and Central Buckeye, aquatic and pool facilities, Sun Valley Parkway, and South Buckeye, and then East Buckeye for pickleball courts.
Miranda.
Yes, sir.
Is there any mention, and I haven't seen it in here, of archery? I saw at one time, we might be looking at an archery range down at the shooting, but I haven't seen anything in here about it.
Yeah, we kind of, we, we depicted archery with, in categories with outdoor adventure activities, and you see that listed in some of the, I think it's in the programming, if I go back here. You have outdoor adventure as different programming options, and so archery is in there. It was one of the ones that's listed higher, and it is something that we plan to incorporate into our facility out at Joe Foss.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
So now I'm gonna turn it back over to Bob, who's gonna talk with you about our level of service recommendations. So level of service in this context means where do we want to be with a provision of public parks and facilities at our ultimate build-out? So think future us. What are we doing now to get us there? So Bob's gonna talk with you about where we are now compared to our adopted level of service from two thousand and sixteen, and then how we plan to close that gap.
So one of the things that we did as part of the Parks and Recreation Master Plan is we surveyed some of our sister cities, not only here in the valley, but also here in Arizona, but also one national community with Boulder, Colorado, who has similar demographics to Buckeye with a similar population. Boulder's also on the fringes of the Denver metro area. So on this chart, you can see the developed acres of parks per one thousand in population. And when I talk about developed parks, these are park acres that are improved. They have amenities on them that are open and accessible to the public. So for example, the forty-acre parcel that the city owns near the Gila River, that's not included in here. A hundred-acre parcel that the city purchased just north of Terravallus, that's not represented here either. So again, these are just parks that we have developed that are open. And we also looked at the provision for those that were two acres or less. So for Buckeye, we have six point five five acres of developed parks that are less than two acres. And these are our smaller pocket parks that are located here in downtown Buckeye. So this is our Sixth Street Plaza. This is our Bembo Park, our Narimore Park, Serena Park. Then you stair-step that up to parks that are between three to fifteen acres. That seven point three nine is Town Park, where our Aquatic Center and the Dr. Sade Recreation Center and the museum is located. For those between sixteen and fifty acres, that forty-seven acres, that's a combination of Earl Legger recreational facility, but also the developed trailhead at Skyline Regional Park, which is about twenty-two acres, and then up to sixty-eight acres for Sundance Park. So our total developed park acres per one thousand is one point zero nine. Now, when you add the developed acres for Joe Foss, for that sports complex, there's about fifty acres of the two hundred and fifty acres that we're leasing from Maricopa County that we could contribute to this, and that would take us up to one point five acres per one thousand. Now, when you compare that to the other communities, so for example, Avondale and Goodyear are about two point two acres per one thousand population for developed parks. And then stair-stepping that up to Peoria and Glendale at three point eight one. And then Boulder, Colorado has about eight acres per one thousand population, and Casa Grande at a total of ten. So again, that, that's looking at the developed parks in Buckeye is on the lower end of that spectrum. And we also did a comparison for indoor recreational facilities and pool facilities. So for Buckeye, we have our three recreation centers, and that includes the Senior Center here in downtown Buckeye, the Dr. Sade Recreation Center, and then Sundance Recreation Center. And so the total square footage of those three facilities is twenty-two thousand. We also looked at the, the pool square footage of the pool surface area and compared that to per one thousand in population. So for Buckeye, at least for indoor recreation facility, we have a hundred and eighty-eight square feet per one thousand residents. Again, looking at that pool surface area, we're at sixty-three square feet per one thousand residents. Now comparing the recreation square footage and stair-stepping that up, the next highest would be Peoria at two hundred and eleven square feet. And then Glendale and Goodyear are pretty comparable at four hundred and fifty and four hundred and eighty-three. Avondale with their American Sports Center has nine hundred and forty-eight square feet per one thousand residents. And again, Boulder and Casa Grande seem to be on that higher end at thirteen hundred and almost fifteen hundred. Again, for pool square footage, again, Buckeye's on the lower end. And then going back up on the scale, you have Glendale, Peoria, Goodyear, and then Avondale, and again, Casa Grande, and then Boulder. So again, that's looking at both recreation center and aquatic centers. And we know it's just not the city that's providing parks to Buckeye residents. There's also the HOA communities that have parks that they're providing, and these can range from pocket parks to more substantial parks, whether that's the Tartesso Sports Park, or the Walton Park in Verado. So for Buckeye, we have a hundred and twenty-nine acres in our inventory of developed parks. When you look at the HOA and what they're providing, they're at five hundred and eight acres. So that total is six hundred, six hundred and thirty-seven acres of developed parks for Buckeye residents, which equates to five point three to 5.3 acres per 1,000. Now, back in 2016, Buckeye City Council set a standard of eight acres per 1,000. So, and we're not proposing to change that as part of this Parks and Recreation Master Plan update. We also looked at some of the other communities and the differences between what the city provided versus the HOAs and what that total level of service was versus what their long-term goal would be. So for Goodyear, they have 6.6 acres per 1,000 residents as a combination between what the city provides and the HOA communities, but their ultimate goal is to get to 8.8 acres per 1,000. Chandler, a combination is at 8.2 acres per 1,000, ultimate goal of 8.5. And then again, Casa Grande is just blowing everyone out of the water at 22 acres per 1,000, but ultimate goal is 19, and so they're already exceeding what their recommended service levels would be. So again, back in 2016, council set the goal for eight acres per 1,000, which was evenly split between the city at four acres per 1,000 and then the HOA communities. Again, we're far short of reaching our goal of four acres per 1,000 at 1.09, but the development community has been keeping pace as new units are getting built in Buckeye at 4.2 acres, and again, just shortly over exceeding the four acres. So we really believe as Buckeye continues to grow that it's the strategic partnership between the city and the developments to continue moving us forward to provide adequate parks for Buckeye residents. But on the city side, we know it's not feasible for us to go and build thousands and thousands acres of parks. And so we really, as part of this master plan, looked at how could we get there to where we need to be? And so we're proposing a 30-year stair-stepped approach to get to the ultimate goal of four acres per 1,000. So on this slide, you can see in 2025, to get to 1.6 acres, we would need 63 additional acres of parks. Now, again, I had mentioned previously the Joe Foss sports complex would add 50 acres. So really, for us right now, we're about 13 acres shy of hitting that goal. And then as you stair-step up in 2035, to get to 2.15 acres, we would need an additional 209 acres of developed parks. Then as you stair-step all the way over to 2055, 30 years out, we would need an additional 339 to get to almost about 800 acres of developed parks in Buckeye's inventory. Again, we knew that it wasn't realistic for us to go and propose, well, we need to go build, you know, an additional 400 acres of parks right now to hit that goal. So we spaced that out over the next 30 years to hit that goal and make it more achievable for the city. We have taken significant steps to help us achieve that goal, and so I'm kind of excited about this animation. I was really proud of myself as I did this, so hopefully it wows you guys too. But we did buy the 100 acres near Terrebales. See that animation right there? Again, we have that development agreement with West Park to develop 25 acres. We own the 40 acres along the Gila River, and again, the Joe Foss shooting range we recently added into the inventory. A few years ago, we had also done a site assessment to look at where parks could be located north of I-10, and so some of the additional opportunities there include two state trust land parcels, one just south of Sun City Festival, and the other on the east side of the Sun Valley Parkway. We've also been looking at partnership opportunities with the Bureau of Land Management. So they do own 225 acres just north of the Cap Canal that poses another opportunity for us. Council supported submitting a lease application to the Bureau of Land Management for two parcels that are just north of the I-10 and State Route 85 interchange, and we refer to those as Buckeye Central Park only because those are located right smack dab in the middle of Buckeye's planning area. We also have the flood retaining structure number four that's off of Jack Rabbit Trail just north of I-10, and I think that poses an interesting partnership opportunity to coordinate with the Flood Control District, look at adding sports fields in the retention, kind of like what you see at Reach 11 in Phoenix. So that's another opportunity that we've had initial conversations a few years ago that we'd like to reinvigorate those conversations. Council supported us submitting the lease application for two parcels on the east side of Skyline Regional Park that totaled 640 acres. We've been making steady progress in our conversations with BLM, and we're hopeful that we can bring a lease agreement to council, hopefully by the end of this calendar year. In this upcoming year's operating budget, we'd like to conduct a study to look at additional land opportunities south of I-10. So I'd mentioned we had done that study a few years ago for the parcels north of I-10. We'd also like to look at other future opportunities for south of I-10, where we could potentially put a multi-gen center, a pool, a library, and a park. And then again, through some of the feedback that we heard through community and stakeholder engagement, we do believe there's a strong opportunity to partner with the school districts to locate parks adjacent to their properties for joint use. Now, as part of the Parks and Recreation Master Plan from 2016, there were some standards in there related to private development, and we aren't proposing to make substantial changes to that. However, there are a couple of things that we've been coordinating with the development community on. So for example, for communities that would hit that population threshold where it would necessitate a park that was over 50 acres in size, we were able to coordinate with the development community to allow them to split that into two separate parks that would then be linked by a linear trail system to connect those two together. We've also added language in there that anything that was over 15 acres in size could be conveyed to the city through some type of agreement and could be eligible for the community park impact fee and get a credit on that. And then also looking at providing some flexibility for trail lighting, whether that was motion censored or solar lighting options for any trail lighting. Now I'm going to turn it over to Miranda, who's going to talk about the planned themes and the recommendations that are associated with it.
Great, we're almost there. Last switch, I think. So all of that feedback, all of the data, all of the survey results, stakeholder input, levels of service, analysis, et cetera, works us into these five overarching themes of the plan. And each one of these themes has the most supported key recommendations and a visionary project that goes along with it. At the end of this plan, Chapter 13, is basically a work plan for us. It's a set of objectives that outlines specific actionable things that staff can go and do to further us towards accomplishing these overarching themes. So that work plan is important to us. The last plan from 2016 had something like 110 of those. I think we accomplished somewhere near 80 of those objectives. So each of those objectives will be divided into these themes. So the first is to celebrate our natural resources, and the most supported key recommendations from that theme is to explore the partnership opportunities for nature center with organizations like the Audubon or the White Tank Mountains Conservancy, to continue the investment in the Rio Reimagined Project, to conduct a grant study on land purchase opportunities, and to partner with the Flood Control District of Maricopa County to maximize green infrastructure drainage solutions as the need develops. So you can see that 73% of our residents supported dedicated funding options that enable the preservation of the open space, and then 87% of our residents support preserving open space and high-value natural resources. Under enhanced community connectivity, the most supported key recommendations were to create a trail connection between Skyline and the White Tank Mountains regional parks, add a trailhead to the west side of Skyline Regional Park, which would be accessible to those communities to the west and the north, to connect the rivers to ridges concept. So that's connecting our mountains in the north to our rivers in the south and to the west. And then to create a 10-year arts and culture master plan, which again is in the budget package that you will see before you this evening. Under grow a well-distributed park system, the most key, most supported key recommendations is to create a shared-use performing arts space, to work with developers on opportunities to construct parks and master-planned communities that could be conveyed to the city, and to partner and co-locate future schools with land for community parks, recreation centers, and aquatics facilities. So again, looking at those partnership opportunities. Under strategically provide programming, the most supported key recommendations is to partner with master-planned communities to host special events and programs so that we can have events and festivals throughout the different areas of our cities. So again, assess partnership opportunities for nature-based program education, and then also provide adaptive recreation programming for all. That was another user group that showed up in large numbers to our different outreach plans, who felt that currently we're under-representing them and that they're looking for additional programs and resources to be provided through our facilities and programs. And then to reinvest in our existing assets, the most supported key recommendations under this theme was to add 10 pickleball courts to Sundance Park, as are depicted in the ultimate plans, to implement the park ranger program, which again is part of tonight's budget package, to implement a formal volunteer program. We do have a very robust program, but maybe formalize and organize that a little bit differently and more formally. And then to create a gateway on the Monroe Avenue realignment. So taking a look at the Town Park property, and as the Monroe is built in its ultimate condition, whatever that is, how can we utilize that property to build a welcoming entrance to those who are entering our downtown from the east? So in closing, I want to take a moment to acknowledge the incredible amount of time and effort and dedication that the team has put into this plan. Both Bob and the folks that you see here tonight are some of the most professional and dedicated folks that you can find, for sure. They're excited for the plan and have worked really hard to produce a good plan that's right for Buckeye and that won't sit on the shelf and isn't just like every other city's I also want to recognize our board members, who have put a ton of time and effort into the review and input of this plan, and then ultimately our residents. The residents showed up in great numbers, let us know what they thought, and definitely let us know what they wanted most, so we appreciate that. The plan itself reflects and is inclusive of the community. It balances stakeholder and resident input. It sets a roadmap for the future. It supports our partners in development services and more clearly communicating park standards for the city, and it meets the requirements for national accreditation and satisfies the council goal. So looking at our next steps, we're presenting, we presented with the Community Services Advisory Board on May 7th with a unanimous recommendation to approve. We're presenting with you this evening, and we're open to any feedback that you have that you'd like to see us go work on for the final plan. On May 21st, which is tomorrow, we will be hosting a developer meeting. We'll be listening to any final development input and listening to there any issues that they have with the plan and taking their feedback, and then taking it to planning and zoning on June 10th for a possible recommendation to approve, and then coming back with you on June 17th for approval of the plan, possible approval of the plan. June 18th, we're going to take a nap, and then June 19th, we'll start some implementation and get working on the plan. With that, Bob and I are here to answer any questions that you may have.
Okay, council questions? Vice Mayor.
I know we've discussed trails along the canals before, and I know that there's been discussion about whether there had to be fences or whether there had to be something else that the city might partake in. If we can work through some of that, which I'm sure we've talked about all of that again, could that be considered part of our park system added into the acreage that we're looking to build up to give us numbers on how many acres per resident? Could that be part of that, or would that be strictly a separate, private deal?
So Vice Mayor, thank you for the question. It depends on the deal itself, right, and whether or not that would stay private or public. Part of the plan recommendation is to continue those conversations with the BWCCDD, the RID, and the Arlington Canal Groups, and see what we can do for utilizing some of those maintenance roads as trails. We've had some successful conversations, and then we've had some conversations that didn't work out successfully. So we will continue those conversations as the plan develops. I'm looking back to Bob, because he's really the expert in the trail development with the canal system. Is there anything that I missed in that?
We will continue those conversations, like Miranda said. You know, some of them we've made some progress on, others not so much. And you know, trying to find a formal agreement that we can move forward and take to council that would then support having public trails along the irrigation districts canals are our ultimate goal. We just haven't been able to land there. A year, years ago, council, actually I think it was 2012, council had approved an agreement with the Buckeye Water Conservation and Drainage District. We could actually receive grants from Arizona State Parks and Trails. We were ready to go, and then the district backed out. So we were really heartbroken by that because we were ready to pull the trigger, we were ready to develop that pilot project. But I think they had some concerns from their board members, where they just, I don't think it was the right timing for them, whereas it might have been the right time for their previous general manager. So we'll continue those conversations with those irrigation districts, and I feel like we just need one successful pilot project to show that this can work and then continue to build on that success.
Could that be added into our acreage? Or do we, would that depend on the actual agreement that we get at that time?
I think it would depend on the agreement. If it was open to the public, then it definitely could be added into the acreage.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Vice Mayor.
Mr. Mayor, I don't have a comment, I don't have a question, I just have a comment. Great job, you guys. It's a lot of work. You guys, I've seen you at the airfare, community events, and you guys have really reached out to try and get all of the information that you can from the residents. So good job. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember Goodman.
Yeah, I agree with Councilmember Yonker. It's a fantastic job. It was a big lift, and you guys pulled it off. I think we have a plan that is doable. I would like to see something happen quicker than 30 years, but let's get, move this along. A couple of things, I believe the concern with irrigation districts and using the canal banks has to do with liability, but, and this is more of a question for Councilor McCoy, that under state law, we can, they're shielded from liability? Is that the right way to put it?
Well, Mayor and Councilmember Goodman, it's actually fairly nuanced. I don't know that I'm, I can't explain exactly the distinction that the law makes, but in terms of recreational users, there's some factors that the courts weigh and whether, determine whether or not there's immunity or not, and it's based on the way things are operated, the type of conditions there. So I'm not 100% certain that that's the case, but I have been in other jurisdictions where we have made arrangements with the various irrigation districts to utilize the canals, and you see that up on the CAP canal running through Scottsdale and some other places too. So it's certainly possible to do.
Yeah, even canals that run through the city of Phoenix. Yeah. So I'm excited as we move that along. One big question, we haven't mentioned statistically valid survey in the last 20 minutes. I am interested, what was the confidence interval of your survey?
I don't know that we have that number off the top of our head.
I'm just joking.
Yeah, I know. I think it's in the playoffs.
Bob's like, that's the one thing I didn't ask.
I think one of the workshops, he said it was plus or minus 10, so at least if my memory serves. But I like the methodology and how you approached the survey, looking citywide for citywide amenities, and I think that model can apply to lots of things. So, nice job. Keep up the good work.
Thank you, Councilman Goodman, and thank you for including statistically valid in your questions and comments. That's seven, seven total times. And just want to remark first, great job, and some of the most outstanding animation I've seen in all my years on council.
Bob's a gold star chase there. So appreciate that.
Appreciate all of the output, and it's been all over the place, and it's not just with the residents that are asking for certain parks and such, but it's the actual users though, and I can really appreciate that you went to the youth sports, not only folks that are, I'm sure there were quite a few people that are part of the Buckeye youth sports, but even outside stakeholders that are using our properties all the time and getting input from them on what they would like to see moving forward. So really appreciate you guys doing that. We've talked about it before, and I think we have a tremendous opportunity with school districts to share costs and share resources. to share costs and share resources, and not only plant parks adjacent to, but maybe supersized ballfields that are part of the district. And it sounds like there's several of the districts throughout the community that are wanting to enter into some kind of agreement where maybe we're participating in some of the capital costs. They have the land, of course, and then we can help with the O and M and programming of the parks, so it's not just a schoolyard park. Can you guys speak just a little bit to that, on both existing and future stuff that we may be able to build?
So like Bob said, I think that we just need one, we need one really good pilot project that works. So taking a look at schools, and like you said, supersizing, you know, a schoolyard, maybe it's that we, maybe it's that the city lights the ballfield so they're usable at night. Maybe it's that we have a maintenance agreement. We do have one across the street with Sixth Street Plaza. And I think that it's just incumbent on us to be really good stewards of whatever that agreement looks like, right? So if we open up some of these spaces, if you think back 30 years ago, you know, schoolyards weren't fenced. You could go, you know, you could go and hang out at the park, or I mean, at the school after school. So kind of trying to recreate that vision and open those lockdown areas after hours in a way that is still safe for the schools. It doesn't, you know, it doesn't threaten their school safety during the day. It doesn't diminish their facilities. Maybe it enhances their facilities by the city being able to, again, maybe it's lighting, maybe it's maintenance, maybe it's upgrading irrigation, or the type of, you know, the type of turf that you put down, those type of things. So there has been some discussions with the school districts. I do believe there's interest. We just need to find the right one. We need to go in at the beginning. There's things that you can do, like planning where the bathroom is in the school so that it can be accessed from the outside, but not, you don't enter the school, right? So there's some things that we can do to make the design work, and there is interest, I believe, in school. And when I see this becoming, because Buckeye is so big, we're not going to be able to go and build all of the community parks that every neighborhood needs right away. But can we look at maybe some neighborhood hubs that center around the schools? The schools kind of become those neighborhood hubs and provides some services, some facilities in a smaller way for now, until we start building some of these larger sports parks and things like that.
And I think initially when we talk about that it's all about the sports fields and baseball diamonds and soccer fields and such, is there an opportunity also for indoor recreation? And maybe it's setting aside the gym that would be built as typically integrated into the middle of a school, a campus, but moving that out, same kind of thing, out adjacent to, so it's fenced separate, and you can have city programming after hours or even during hours potentially.
Yeah, I think that, I think the opportunity exists with gymnasiums. It could be libraries. It could be, it could be, you know, aquatic centers with high schools eventually. It's just about getting the right situation, the right agreement, the right partners, and putting the right agreement in place.
Yeah, agreed on that. I think that's a real important opportunity to leverage. And then also with the development community and working toward not, some of the development community builds some incredible parks that have no programming. We have no ability to jump in and program those parks. I think there's an opportunity to do that same thing, and not claim them, but include them in the open space and some of the stats that we're reporting on, having those bigger parks that a development would build. Maybe there's opportunities to partner with them on, you know, some of the O and M cost, and here's how we can program in sports that are city-led. And just a fore-instance, Verado, I think, I don't think there are any Buckeye sports that happen in Verado. Is that correct?
That's correct. Yeah, I think that there's a ton of opportunity and that we can get as creative as the developer that we're working with is interested in getting. So sometimes we have some developers that are really excited to get involved with the community and work with us to develop some of these concepts. And sometimes they want to come in and build their own facilities for their own residents. And I think that each community is unique, and I think that, you know, we're doing our best to roll with whatever, you know, that is that they're looking to build. So I think that there's a ton of opportunity to get very creative, and I think that this plan not only allows us to get that way, but encourages us to get really creative with the developers.
And when we're making our comparisons between us and say Avondale or Goodyear or Casa Grande, who's apparently crushing it, first, what are they doing different than we are? What are they including in the?
Casa Grande, they have a lot of golf course acres is part of their, that's part of their acreage.
That are city-owned golf courses? Oh, okay.
And they're converting a lot of those acres currently from golf courses to active space.
Pickleball courts. Millions of pickleball courts.
They are, they are converting a lot of that space right now, big water users. And so they're in the process of converting a lot of those acres.
So those will convert to a different use and likely not be the, all of the open space that they're reporting in there?
I believe, and I don't know this for sure, I believe that they're converting it still to active park space of some sort. They've just identified maybe they're less used golf courses and decided different ways to activate that space.
Do we include the golf courses that are throughout the Buckeye community in our numbers?
Not for public.
Not for the public park acres or for like the developed park acres, only because they're such a niche, they meet at such a niche demand. But the rest of the HOA parks would be included.
Yeah, that way throws off the, what Casa Grande is, or what we're reporting from Casa Grande and the comparables in there. So if we include areas like that, and I, and so I mean, to further that, I wonder how the developed communities that we have differ from, say, a Goodyear or, maybe they're just more built out, and there's more parks and open space that are built throughout those that show their number to be higher than what our number is. You're going to go back to it here.
I am. So all those animations.
Animation is phenomenal.
So in that, the second column, those HOA and other inventory acres, that does compare the HOA to HOA. Now, the reason that Casa Grande includes their public, their golf courses is because they are public. So that's why that number is thrown off. But again, if you looked at Chandler, Goodyear, Buckeye, and it's hard because not every city counts their HOA parks. Because like if you look at Chandler, you know, they've got way more city acres than they do HOA because of the, when they developed and the way that they developed. So not every city takes a look at the HOAs. I think that we were among the first in 2016 to really consider the privately developed parks as we go to build the city, because we're building it differently than Chandler did. That's why you see a little bit of, that's why you see the swing, I guess, is, I'm getting at.
And these numbers don't include Skyline?
Include the developed portions of Skyline. So same thing across the other cities. It includes their developed park acres, so not undeveloped. But anything that you can access as a resident, it includes. So that's why Bob's animated chart or map is fun, because that, those are all the areas that we either own, that we either own, or we could potentially own their undeveloped acres that we own.
Okay.
Undeveloped. So that's why they're not included in this, in this table yet.
As part of the master plan, one thing that we did look at was even undeveloped open space that was still owned by the city. So for example, the 8,675 acres for Skyline Regional Park, in comparison to say the city of Scottsdale and the McDowell Sonoran Preserve, you know, based on our population and our level of service, we're actually one of the highest when you include Skyline Regional Park into that equation. Again, just focused on the developed park acres, we're on the lower end. When you open that up to the entirety of Skyline Regional Park, it places us on the higher end of the spectrum.
On the HOA side, do we include things like the linear parks that run along the washes in Verado as well?
Yeah, as long as there was some type of development or some type of improvement, they were included into these numbers.
That could be a bench, a shrinking fountain, like any type of, anything that makes it usable. So if it's just a retention area that has.
It's the pathways that, yeah, so all of that is included in. Just trying to get an idea of, there's, in some cases, some pretty wild differences in there, and want to make sure we're comparing apples to apples and taking credit for all of the open space and park space that we've developed.
For open space, we are leading the way for sure, for preserved open space. It's the developed parks that we're lagging.
And then you mentioned, and I appreciate this also, the developer input. Can you talk just a little bit about maybe what we had, some of the ideas that we had going into the master plan, and then the input we've received, and what concessions or massaging has been done?
So again, this slide explains some of the changes that we made between the 2016 master plan versus what we're recommending as part of the 2025 update. So again, allowing those parks that would be over 50 acres in size to get subdivided into two, and allowing the parks that were over 15 acres in size, as long as there was some type of formal agreement was in the best interest of the developer, best interest of the city for us to take on the operations and maintenance of that park, having that formalized agreement, having that conveyed over to the city, and then again, allowing them to be eligible for a credit on their community park impact fees and the trail lighting clarifications. So those are some of the big changes between the 2016 master plan to today, and that was through engagement with the development community. We presented two times to the Development Partners Group. Again, we met with the Terra Ballis Development Team back in August. So some of the outcomes from those conversations.
Okay, that was the main overarching step, the rest of it says, the attorney says, nits and nats that were taken care of.
Well, a lot of it was surrounded around maybe making some of the language a little bit stronger, more. So for example, on the 15 acres, to be, that it could be conveyed, making that language a little bit stronger, that the city would consider parks over 15 acres, and throwing in the impact fee credit. So yeah, so a lot of it just kind of surrounded making the language a little bit stronger, if there's another example.
Okay, I would just echo what my colleagues have said, just outstanding work. And I know it's a heavy lift getting this to the finish line, and we're almost there. I appreciate you all bringing it forward and create some really cool visions for the future of parks and trails in Buckeye. Any other questions or comments from Councilmember? Okay, thank you. All right, item 2B, presentation and discussion regarding Monroe Avenue, future cross-section and streetscape design. And Brian Craig, are you sure?
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Mayor and Council. This may look like a familiar topic, like the Jelly of the Month Club. It's the gift that keeps on giving. It is an important topic. We have important decisions to make as a community and you as a council. We ran short of time previously on this topic, but staff was also directed to go gather additional feedback and metrics and report that back to the council, and I'm pleased to be here tonight to share additional data and to move the needle a little bit more forward on the outcome for Monroe. This is what we'll cover tonight. Very briefly, overview of the Downtown Specific Area Plan, process and involvement and the outcomes. We will seek to review some of the recent efforts and how we've transformed Monroe with the pilot projects, and then look at some long-term phasing, construction ideas for downtown. That will hope to jumpstart the revitalization efforts. And I do have the public safety, financial and the driver convenience or inconvenience impacts report back to you. And then we will look at the three scenarios as we sort of narrowed down recently as a community and as a council. And then finally end on some of the feedback that was able to share on the stakeholder survey results. And the Downtown Specific Area Plan, over a year, upwards of two years, start to finish process. Very intentional decision to have a 90-member stakeholder group. That sounds pretty unwieldy, but the idea was we don't want to turn anyone away that had input in the process. So you'll hear some of these numbers will represent how extensive that outreach was. 865 community responses to surveys. Between the two open houses at the beginning of the process, over 440 attendees. We have a monthly newsletter that goes out to over 4,000 subscribers. In addition to that, 1,952 direct mailings to downtown property owners, and then upwards of 50 social media posts, which netted 11,000 engagements and reached 77,000 accounts on social media. Including tonight, we're at about 16 events that we've held related to DSAP, three of them specifically related to Monroe. And I'll report back on one of those events that we've had recently. And then culminating, the Downtown Specific Area Plan was adopted in October of 2023 with the direction to immediately go after some of those ambitious goals. And by goals, I mean that last bullet, there was upwards of three dozen or more action items that were outlined in that plan for staff and community to work on. Maybe perhaps none as important as catalyzing what happens on Monroe to really create the environment that attracts businesses, shoppers, visitors, but also enhances the residential experience downtown.
Brian, real quick, were those statistically valid surveys that you guys did?
I was ready for that question. So in the original process, those outreaches may be more statistically valid than scientifically speaking, the surveys we're going to talk about later are really geared towards those most passionate about downtown. So this is what the Downtown Specific Area Plan that was adopted calls for the vision for Monroe. When we say vision, the numbers outlined across the bottom, as far as the widths of parking areas, sidewalk, those are guides. Those are suggestions. This was the community adopted vision, really with the target of enhancing the customer and visitor experience. So reducing truck traffic, reducing through traffic speeds and volumes, enhancing the pedestrian opportunities, creating shade in downtown, creating opportunities for retailers and for restaurants to expand their space into the public realm, which by nature creates additional safety downtown, reduces the noise impacts from vehicles, and creates that environment that really attracts the high-end retailer and restaurants that this community is seeking. You may have seen this slide before in one or two of the presentations. Just a quick review, we really view it as five stages. Some of the stages have multiple steps, but stage one is considered complete. It includes City Hall East Parking Lot, where we expanded parking to not only re-stripe the parking lot, but also add on-street parking to Roosevelt to the north. Also the demonstration project through Monroe from First to Ninth, and it tapers as you go further east. Yes, there's some lessons learned on that initial striping exercise, and we'll talk about some of those as we get into the process. And perhaps maybe it's worth mentioning that if you were following the legislature about two years ago, and again, last year, one of the ideas was to prohibit cities from the local control of what they do on their streets, the road diet bill, prohibiting communities from reducing the number of lanes. So that was one of the impetuses for initiating that pilot project initially. Again, we'll talk again, and I'll use that word quite a bit, pilot project, were meant to test the idea and to gather feedback. So all the feedback we've received is exactly what we were looking for. The interim period as we move into, okay, excuse me, step, stage two, landscape demonstration. So as part of imagining what you could do downtown, it's important to introduce some of those elements. The planters, the trees that we have outside, the demonstration parklet, give a sense of what could occur across the whole section. And that's really what stage three is intended to do. We're in the process of designing that and making decisions now. And through the CIP process, the project's extending that one block demonstration to maybe perhaps longer in the section or the whole section from First to Ninth. And then stage four, really the meat and potatoes of what happens at grade and below grade. So the DCR project, we'll talk about here more in a minute. It's really the utilities and the infrastructure, the planning and design for that project, and there's multiple stages in that. And that's typically, from what I understand, is about 80% of the cost, 80% of the effort, but a lot of that occurs below grade. You don't see it, all the storm sewer, the dry utilities and wet utilities. Then stage five, we have a slide on each of these, really a new cityscape. What is netted at some point in the future, anticipated fiscal year 30, give or take, depending on budgeting process and when council selects that new streetscape for downtown. So you've seen this slide at least once, so we won't dwell on it. But really, the outcome was this demonstration painting project, not moving the curbs, not realigning crosswalks or introducing a lot of permanent infrastructure, but creating an opportunity. or introducing a lot of permanent infrastructure, but creating an opportunity for the community, for the leadership in Buckeye to view what it could look like if you squint your eyes real, real close and imagine those parklet areas are actually expanded sidewalks. But with that, we also reduced the speed through Monroe in downtown. Worked on maintaining parallel parking, preserving access where it exists today to the businesses, north and south. Stepping through that, stage two, right outside City Hall, here, the introduction of the box trees and the planters and the parklet area. Again, these aren't meant to exhibit what would happen in a permanent section, five, six years in the future. These are really to imagine if the sidewalk were moved more to the interior or the center line of the street, you'd have plantings along the sidewalk that create that enhanced shade and opportunities for pedestrians and shoppers. The chicanes, which have, as some of the intersections were cleaned out all through this process. But again, the parklets, those are things that can live on beyond this demonstration project. Maybe they become part of permanent fixtures on side streets where there's not as much traffic. Or when we, if we choose to go to wider sidewalks with decisions in the future, opportunities to move those seedings up on the sidewalk, the paved areas outside the street, trafficway. And then again, this is in conceptual form because we're in the middle of that process now. We've had a community meeting on this topic, but what would we like to see as we fill the gap between today and when the Monroe section is reconfigured or reconstructed? We want to expand as a community, the offers, the opportunities for more shading, more trees, landscaping and seeding through the section. Give businesses the opportunity to decide for themselves what happens outside. If they like additional plants, materials, or an opportunity to introduce fenced-off seating. And those decisions will follow what we decide as a permanent, permanent alignment for Monroe. Again, stage four, really where a lot of the work gets done before Monroe happens and before you have the finished product. 80% of the cost, as I mentioned, we're really, council's going to be exploring the DCR, the Design Concept Review or Design Concept Report, which will outline not only the opportunities, but potential challenges that would occur with what's below the grade today. Where do we have crisscrossing utilities? Where are the location of utilities for the future? What is the capacity at buildout for downtown Buckeye? So the types of things that the CIP team will be working on over the next year. And then middle of that stage, really the stormwater project may be the largest in scope to convey water from downtown, north of downtown, through downtown without letting that, the floodwaters subside in the Monroe area. That also includes the dry utilities such as fiber, cable, electric, but also the city utilities, water and sewer, upgrading those. We have aging infrastructure, but also is it undersized for what we imagine downtown could look like? If you recall, council, last year, we approved some new zoning for downtown, which encourages upper-story residential. So there may be a need for higher pressure or higher volume of water and sewer. Then construction coordination and phasing as a piece of that, really it's an economy of scale. If we're going to tear up the road once or dig once, let's do it once. Let's get as much done as possible. Let's be smart about how we do it, whether it's north to south or east to west. But also, coordination doesn't just mean for our benefit, it also means for the businesses, the retailers, the offices downtown. How can we help preserve their access to their customers and parking for their customers? That's, that's a heavy lift and that's going to be part of that stage four. Stage five is when we're all celebrating, we're cutting ribbons, we're enjoying the spoils of all the effort. Imagine it looks something like this, where we've created an opportunity to expand pedestrian access, invite the community back down, created an opportunity to have enhanced or later into the evening nightlife, restaurants, taking advantage of additional seating and widened sidewalks, creating festival atmosphere in downtown. Really activating a community center in downtown Buckeye. Just for reference, Mill Avenue in Tempe, left side of your image, 1950s to today. Some of the similar experience, a wide boulevard highway through the community on Mill Avenue. And then today, you look, there's a little bit wider sidewalks, enhanced shade opportunities, restaurants coming out into that widened sidewalk, creating seating opportunities. By its nature, the narrow street lanes will slow traffic, make it more attractive to consumers. And then just briefly, we were able to find what did Buckeye look like about that time through the Monroe section. Notice, parallel parking on both sides, very similar width, very wide, one lane in each direction traffic. At this time, as you may recall, there was no I-10 through this area, so this carried a lot of traffic that was headed to California. Certainly, there's iconic signage and it was a thriving business environment. But I think as you could see in the previous image with Mill Avenue, they, the modern, consumers looking for more of an experience that creates that opportunity to live and stay in the downtown area as well. Well, this will, we'll pull this slide again. I've, I know it's a repeat from earlier in the image, but I wanted to, to mention that, just like it's a vision, it's a concept in the downtown plan. We striped something compatible with that as a pilot project. Some of the feedback we've received includes, I have delays from going from one end to the other. It's slower to get through downtown, longer left turn queues, it's harder to make left turns, mid-block especially, or where there's no left turn pocket anymore. Parking may be a little bit more difficult or perceived to be difficult as you're closer to the through traffic rather than that extra bailout lane, as some people have mentioned. Safety of getting out of a parked car once you have parked with traffic immediately to your driver's side door. Difficult to enter Monroe around parked cars. And the reason I list some of these is the opportunity to learn from sort of this pilot project and how we prepare for a future project itself. Other questions on the challenges downtown? Was it more difficult for police and fire to do their job well with the re-striping? And then what was the impact on businesses? Have we seen a reduction in businesses or tax revenue received to the city? And we're going to address each of those. Beginning first, the police department aggregated some data for us, really the intent to address some of those concerns about was emergency services hampered with the re-striping through downtown. The next few slides address sort of the data collected from First Street or Miller all the way around the curve to the narrower Apache alignment. On the left side, looking at speeding citations issued, this is a three-year look back over three fiscal years. I'll tell you, at the end of fiscal year 24 was when the re-striping occurred in June. So between the orange bar and the green bars when the re-striping had occurred. And you have to be careful, this is, fiscal year 25 is only the first nine months. So even though I show 17 citations issued in '24, the first nine months of that fiscal year, 14 were issued compared to 11 over the same period of time in fiscal year 25. Accidents may be a better measure than citations issued. Similarly, there was a reduction. 30 accidents reported over that period, first nine months of 2024, fiscal year 24, and then 18 over fiscal year 25. And then response time may be the most important, as far as can they get to the calls. Priority one calls over this period of time, pre-striping and post-striping, there was actually a reduction. The police department approved response times over this period. I wouldn't say the striping contributed to that, but it certainly didn't diminish their ability to provide priority one response over that period of time. And similarly, the fire department doesn't report the data similar in that same manner, but they report out that the re-striping had no negative impact on their ability to provide emergency response. And lastly, from a business revenue perspective and business growth, again, we had to extrapolate based on the trends over the first nine months of the fiscal year. Fiscal year 24 represents pre-striping in green and then the blue and purple anticipate is the closeout of this fiscal year, fiscal year 25. And in the outline in the box on the bottom left, the businesses contained in that area. And actually, we anticipate, we actually believe the number of businesses increased from 44 to 45 with the recent count. So the projection, as the trend is today, another ending at about $1 million in tax revenue received to the city. So no reduction, no appreciable reduction in business revenue. This, this graph seeks to answer the question, is it slower to go through downtown across Monroe from First to Ninth? This represents thousands, upwards of tens of thousands of points of data, of travelers and cell phone data from First to Ninth through this section. And the blue graph indicates pre-pilot striping and the orange line represents post-striping. So with, based on non-peak hours, so 4:00 AM and 10:00 PM, the gap in time is 15 seconds. And that's mostly attributable to the reduced speed limit through downtown. The widest gap, the widest increment in delay, so to speak, of time through there, 55 seconds. If you subtract out the 15 seconds for speed, on average, at peak hour around school traffic at 2:00 PM, it takes 40 seconds longer to travel from one, from east to west or west to east through downtown. This doesn't account for if you're standing in or you're queued up to go pick up some kids from high school or the elementary school. That, I think that happens in any school area. There's those peak hours where traffic kind of backs up until you can get to the front of the queue and pick up your child. Well, speaking of lessons learned, one of the most prominent pieces of feedback we received at community meetings and other anecdotes from community members is, again, for us as well, safety is a top priority. And this crossing at Ninth Street, even before striping, had been a concern. The city went out and purchased and installed these, outside the median, on the shoulders, these pedestrian crossings and had ordered the full hawk signal, which is that over, the bar that goes over the road that signals the driver that there's a pedestrian wishing to cross the street. So that has been installed. That's one of the things that we did immediately. Okay, now we move immediately or next into the three scenarios as we talked about. And if you were able to attend the community meeting, these are what we presented to the public. And these three scenarios are what we solicited, direct feedback at that meeting, an online survey and then a business survey. This first scenario is the original four-lane highway section. You could see top-down view and then a pedestrian standing in the crosswalk view below that. This is efficient. This is certainly efficient for cars. It moves cars quickly and efficiently through downtown. It does discourage slower captured business that's traveling through. That was one of the comments we received. It's today, I have drivers that see my business because they're driving slower through downtown. They're recognizing it. There's color, there's interest in trees. This reduced sidewalk area, I think it's about six feet, mostly through that section. So there's a limit on how wide you can expand the business out into that public space, but also limited area to make those planters or to have a full-size shade tree in that area. This does maximize parking through the section, parallel parking is achieved through this section as well. There's plentiful spaces in this four-lane highway section. This approximates a two-lane section, similar to what we have today, but creating additional opportunities for buffers, trying to address the concern that it's hard to see out when you're entering or exiting those mid-block parking areas or mid-block access to the alleyways. This also preserves left turn pockets at major intersections, especially the signalized ones. But the rest of the section is just a two-lane area with parallel parking or parklet areas. There's more buffer and taper at those curves. As you can see, those mid-block entries create that opportunity to get out, get your car out past the parallel parking before you have to enter traffic or exit traffic. This creates sidewalks of about 16 feet wide, mid-block, at the corners where parking is restricted. The width is about 20 feet, so ample opportunity for furniture, cafe seating, plants, trees, full-size planter boxes. Discourages speeding through the area and certainly truck traffic may find it more difficult to navigate than a true truck, truck traffic route through downtown. More street-level view in a bird's eye perspective, you could see this is to scale, the bench and the tree and the lamppost. Get a sense of how wide that sidewalk is preserved there with those planters and the grates that you would see in other communities that have similar downtowns. Creates the parking area. And also, compared to what we have in an interim condition out on Monroe today, a wider parking area and a little bit wider lane to create a little bit more buffer between opening a driver's side door and the travel lanes. And scenario three, what we're calling the modified three-lane section or the center turn lane throughout. Again, this preserves on-street parking, parallel parking, creates those additional buffers and tapers for entering and exiting parking lots mid-block. The sidewalk is reduced a little bit. It was 16 feet in the previous example. This is closer to 12 to 13-foot wide sidewalk. Still plenty of room to have benches and seating, as you'll see in the next street view perspective, trees within those planter grates. But also opportunities for restaurants to expand their seating out into that public space. Retailers, they have sidewalk opportunities for retail as well. This also creates additional opportunities for mid-block left turns, a little more protected, waiting to turn left rather than blocking the traffic stacked up behind you if you're, if you're waiting for oncoming traffic before you can make those left turns safely. Also, this creates an opportunity for, if we have a day where all the parking is filled and we have emergency vehicles through that section, it creates a path for them to navigate a little bit more swiftly than perhaps the two-lane section. And then again, there's an example here that shows some smaller cafe tables, plenty of room for navigating and walking around that without entering into the public roadway, parking with a little bit more buffer and widened travel lanes. And I'll get right into the three different surveys we gathered over the last few weeks. Beginning first, maybe with a smaller graph, this represents the paper surveys we collected during the meeting on April 23rd with the community in this room. We had upwards of 48 responses. We asked those participants to rank those, their first choice through second and third choice. I'll tell you, you could probably tell by the graph, not everyone had a second or third choice. They had one winning choice and that was what they wanted to submit to us. Some folks turned in a first and second choice, but not a third choice. Paper choice, the paper survey, 50% of the top votes did go to the four-lane section that night. The three-lane section was, as you can tell, in the green, represents first-place votes. 19 to one favored three-lane over a two-lane as an alternative. If you didn't choose the four-lane and you wanted one of the others, the three-lane section was preferred 19 to one. And then as a comparison to the online survey results, which we think captured many of the same participants, maybe not all of them, but we all, we invited them to participate in that as well. And that was 6% of the total response we received for the online survey, which was 859 responses that ran for 10 or 11 days immediately following the community meeting. This was a forced ranking. Give us your choices, one through three, four-lane, three-lane, two-lane. And again, the green represents first-place votes received for that section. Yellow was second-place votes, red was last-place or third-place votes. Four-lane section did receive the most first-place votes, but not the majority. But you can also see that the four-lane section received as many last-place votes as it did first place, 371 versus 368. 57% of respondents, respondents preferred a two- or three-lane section over a four-lane section as their first choice. And then certainly, I think you look at the graph, the red and the green, two-lane and four-lane were the most polarizing. We had people choosing either first or last on those. Whereas if you look at the center column, the three-lane section secured the highest proportion of first and second-place votes. Essentially, I've marked that on the graph for you. 87% of votes for the three-lane section were first or second. I'll come back to this if you have questions. This will be my last slide for you. But again, sampling the businesses through downtown, those that were able to achieve over the last couple of weeks, specifically focusing on those that front Monroe between First and Ninth, we were able to talk to 42 businesses. And we asked them to do the similar exercise of ranking their first through third-place votes. We didn't force their hand on that one. Some of them, again, had a first-place vote only to share with us. Anecdotally, they, some of the feedback we received was they value and appreciate the slower speeds on Monroe. On-street parking does remain a priority for them, but as it's striped today, it's been confusing for some of their customers. And then most of them report no significant change in business volume, but they caution that we're still monitoring that to see how this may affect us over the summer and winter months. Couple outcomes of this, the business survey proves out that about two-to-one ratio, 24 versus 12, preferred the three-lane as their first choice over the four-lane. But even more drastic, four-to-one ratio, they prefer, businesses preferred the three-lane over the two-lane section. Lane receiving the least total amount of votes. Again, not all of them ranked their first place. Some of them provided first and second-place votes. Also, we gathered feedback from not only the Buckeye Valley Chamber of Commerce and also the Buckeye Main Street Coalition. Asked them to share their, what their board and their team represent or prefers for downtown. And the quotes are up there. In short, both those organizations suggested that the three-lane section was preferred by their membership. By their boards, excuse me. Mayor, Council, that is the end of the formal presentation, but I'm sure there may be some questions. I'm happy to go back to any of the slides as you see fit.
Yeah, so on the, how you doing? Thanks, good presentation. Now, on that, the survey, the one prior to that one, there you go. So you're saying that more people voted for the four lanes than the three lanes? Is that what you're saying?
No, not exactly. Councilmember, Mayor, we have the same total amount of votes for every section because you're required to pick one first place, one second place, and one third place. You're asked to rank all three, so you had to make a selection in each category. The four-lane section received the most first-place votes.
Okay.
Not the majority.
Right. I'm actually surprised that it received the most first-place votes because I got a lot of phone calls and text messages saying that they just pushed the button thinking it was gonna work and then they hit submit. They didn't know that they had to hit it and then move it up to first place and then hit submit. So I would think there would be more, even more first, four-lane wanting to do that because they felt that, you know, I got about seven text messages, about ten phone calls, thought they just push it and wanted to know how they can redo it. And I says, "Well, I don't think you can redo it. I think it's just, once you submit it, just submit it." So they couldn't figure it out. So that's something to take in consideration about the four lanes. So you're also saying that before we implement something totally, we have to do a list of infrastructure on Monroe?
Yes, we have to, Mayor, Council, Councilmember Barry, we do have to figure out what infrastructure improvements below grade. And so whether we choose a two, three, or four-lane section, at some point, it's gonna be time to upgrade the wet and dry utilities through this section.
So something being done down Monroe being permanent, it's gonna be a while?
It's entirely up to the CIP and budgeting process how soon we get to that exercise. But we're laying the foundation now with the DCR project to figure out what exists today and what hurdles or opportunities we have. That's regardless, again, how wide the street paving is versus how wide the sidewalk is. That's all still in that same section between the north property line and the south property line.
Okay, thanks. That's what I needed to know.
Yeah, out of all of the surveys, if you combine them in a total, which one had the most votes?
Most total votes?
Yeah.
Again, so the paper survey represents about six percent of the online survey, so that doesn't, and another forty-two for the business survey. I don't have a calculator in front of me, but it's gonna move the needle just a little bit if you add them to the eight hundred and fifty-nine. And I think the challenge with that is, the concern would be with the paper and the business surveys. Some of the, we, several of those folks also participated in the online survey as they were invited to. Maybe duplicating some of those, they're not all original votes.
Right, thank you.
You know, I've been a small business person myself in years past. And I guess my question is, when we look at this, we strive to bring new businesses to downtown Buckeye. That's what we're trying to do, to get new businesses down here. And then if we don't listen to them, I mean, they're down here every day watching cars drive up and down the street. I'm down here a lot. Most of the other people are down here. But if we don't listen to what these businesses are telling us, two-to-one to go to three lanes, then what are we doing? We're ignoring the people that are actually, we're trying to support and we're trying to get more businesses down here. We need to listen to the businesses and listen to what they're saying. They're the ones that have to look at that traffic every day. They're the ones that have to talk to their customers about not having a parking spot and not being able to open up their door. They've faced all of this. And if we don't listen to what they're saying to go to three lanes opposed to two or four, then what are we actually trying to do? By the way, Mr. Mayor, these are not statistically valid though.
Just to clarify then, these are not statistically valid surveys? Is that?
Well, no, mine isn't.
Yours is not?
It's not.
Were these?
These were not randomly sampled. These were by invitation and encouragement of those most passionate about downtown.
Statistically invalid.
That's called a convenient sample.
Statistician.
Brian, you'd mentioned about the perceived danger of getting out of your car on the way, the way the parking is configured now. Do we know how wide the current spot that we have painted on the road is compared to the old one?
I don't.
Come on, John, you know off the top of your head.
Councilmember Yonker, we think nine feet, maybe a little eight plus. It's nine feet inclusive of the paint.
Okay, that didn't really answer my question. What's the difference between the old and the new?
Oh, the old.
Do we know that?
I don't think we have that.
Okay, that's fine. Because I don't, the reason I ask is kind of a loaded question. I don't feel like, I personally, I feel like that it's wider than it used to be, but maybe that's just me. With all of the underground and all, considering all those things moving forward, what, what is our timeframe to really do anything about this? Do we have a thought process on that?
Councilmember Yonker, Mayor, I believe after the DCR yields some results, we'll be bringing that back to Council to say, here's what we believe are our opportunities. We've been forecasting in conversation, it could be three to seven years. And that was a year ago, so two years is a little fast, but it's that four to six year.
Okay. Can you go back to the stats page with the online survey? It would, it's safe to assume that everybody in the community paper meetings also voted in the online survey, I would assume?
We believe many of them were. We encourage them leaving tonight to stay tuned in that online survey and participate in that as well, that community meeting.
For me, there's a, the, the, the three-lane is the obvious frontrunner with making the most people happy as we can. We're never gonna get a hundred percent across the board. It's, this is an exercise of the rule of the thirds. Third, love you. Third are on the fence. Third hate you. And you always try and play to the middle when you get to that. And then I will also agree with Vice Mayor Hughes about the listening to the businesses. That's pretty telling that the businesses feel that way. And that I, if I would have laid a bet, I didn't think it would have been that big of a disparage between what the businesses thought downtown. I thought it would have been a lot closer than that. But thank you for getting all the information to us. I appreciate it.
Councilmember Goodman?
Yeah. Don't have any questions, so I'm gonna wax philosophically here for a little bit. This is, it's gonna be a tough decision when it comes to council. And, you know, when I'm, personally, when I'm faced with those things, I kinda, I try to distill it down where I have two choices, yes or no. And to me, this is, you know, it's a yes or no question. And yes or no is like, are we buying into the vision of what we want the DSAP to achieve? Yes or no? We either do or we don't. Looking at how many lanes the road is gonna be, to me, is like the tail's wagging the dog. And, you know, we really need to look at, when this thing is fully built out, is it what we wanna be? You know, a decision, and I'm gonna use the word simple, but it's not. Decision about the width of the road and how many travel lanes is gonna drive the what's next. You know, what types of businesses are gonna be attracted? You know, are we looking at improving commerce downtown or is it transit? I mean, this to me is a transit question. You know, with four lanes, we're looking at convenience. With two lanes, we're looking at people who want to, they're coming down for a purpose. Oh, you know, that, it, and again, do we want this downtown redevelopment to be a signature project for the city? Or do we want it to be like Miller or Watson? Four lanes, it's Miller or Watson. Two lanes, it's a signature project. The business impacts, I don't, I don't wanna minimize that. But there's going to be impacts on the current businesses. You know, we may get different businesses. You know, back to your picture of, you know, Mill Avenue or even Monroe back in the day, different types of businesses were there. So how people transit this area is gonna drive what type of commerce is gonna be attracted to it. I think, you know, that these small things, again, small decisions are gonna impact bigger decisions down the road. So I think it's more of, you know, not minimizing the surveys and looking what people say, but how is, you know, are we gonna use this to drive that decision on what we want Monroe to be? We know what it is. What do we want it to be? And each one of these has a plus or minus on that. You know, I think if we want it to be a vibrant, people come stay, patronize many businesses versus coming in and doing one. So, you know, I'm not trying to convince my colleagues one way or the other. These are just the things that impact me. You know, if, if the will of the council was to do, you know, three or four lanes, I'm not so sure I'd be bought in to doing the rest of the investment on Monroe. They, the, the two-lane piece fits the vision of what, you know, we, we hope that that downtown will be. You know, it's, you know, do we want what is? We know what what is, is that. What do we want it to be, which is that vibrant gathering place? So, yeah, and tough decision, but those are some of the things that I'm thinking about on this.
Thank you.
I like, I like what he said. But Buckeye's always had four lanes and it was a, the town was booming. People were stopping on the side of the road, getting out, going into the restaurant they wanted to go into, getting out, going into the store they wanted to. So I don't think the four-lane changes the dynamic of, of the businesses. I think narrowing the road, what it did was it turned people away. I was just right here at Hobo Joe and I had a cousin down from California and he wanted to take a picture by Hobo Joe, but we had a wedding to get to in the East Valley. And when we typed in the address to the East Valley, it took us down below, up to Jack Rabbit, over into Goodyear. Now, if he needed gas, where was the next store? In Goodyear. So narrowing the road only to two lanes, it, it, it slows it down. It redirects people away from downtown where we want them. And it, and it puts them, it puts them either in Goodyear or Helevin, that's the next stop. So they're not stopping in our downtown shopping and spending tax dollars. So we have to be careful. I mean, data's good. I mean, we like to look at data, but we also gotta know exactly what's going on with our eyes and what's going on with the people in the community. And when we're routed, when Google routes us, and I mean, I know Buck, I know Arizona, like I can get it to anywhere I need to, but now there's so much traffic everywhere. I use Google. And when it routes me around the city that I'm from, I'm thinking, this is crazy. It's because there's so much traffic that's, when, when you're hindered by traffic, it, it routes you around. I mean, when was the last time you went downtown Glendale? It routes you around. When was the last time you been downtown Peoria? It routes you around. Because it's, the roads are narrow, there's so much traffic. Unless you're going there for a specific reason, you don't go. So if no one's coming through town, they don't see what the town's about because it's routing them around it. So that's something we gotta also take in consideration when we narrow it down to two lanes. I mean, that third lane probably be better, but when we narrow it down to just two lanes, it's, it's not a good idea for business. It's not a good idea for our community because now they're going down below or down baseline or stand on I-ten and not coming down the middle of the city where we want them to be at. Thanks.
I wanna follow up on that real quick too. Let's not forget that on the east side of town, I mean, the west side of town, it's always been one lane. It's never been two. And on the west, east side of town, the county changed it to a single lane coming up and right in front of, is that Apache or baseline? It's baseline. So on either, it's bookended by a single lane on both sides. There's not, we can't do anything about those.
Yeah, and with that single lane coming down MC eighty-five, I know what you're talking about, from Pizza Hut to Jack Rabbit, it, it routes you down below as well when they did that. So, I mean, if you want, I understand, we don't want no one just coming through here and just, and just going by. But if they don't come through here, they'll never see a reason to stop. So you also wanna keep, I mean, I agree, I want that downtown hanging out feeling, everyone's having a good time, but we also want the traffic to come through here to see what it's all about. So we gotta be real careful on just two lanes. It's, I think it's, two lanes is a bad idea.
Really appreciate the conversation and, and the perspectives. And there's no telling where Google's gonna take you. It's a, Google lies. It's a, it's a race thing for me. I put it in, see if I could beat it. Have, have been thinking about this a lot and from a four-lane perspective, and I can appreciate that we want people to come through. And I, I tell people all the time that Buckeye's like the movie Cars. And we're, we're kinda like Radiator Springs where all commerce, everything came right through downtown Buckeye. When I grew up in Glendale, when we went to California, we came through downtown Buckeye and went to Radiator Springs and went to Disneyland. And, and then when I-ten is built, all that changes. And that was in the late eighties, early nineties, I think. You guys would know specifically out in this area, late eighties. So from, let's call it nineteen ninety for easy math, nineteen ninety to now, over that thirty-five years, there, there's been kinda ebbs and flows in what's happened in the downtown area. But I was having this conversation with a resident who wanted to speak about the, the changes that we've made in downtown and taken it from a four to a two-lane. And, and I said, from, from nineteen ninety, there was probably pretty significant business. I frankly did not pay close attention coming through here in the early eighties as a kid to see what businesses were going because it was a, it was a fly-through getting to California. But, but I, there was some, some heyday of Buckeye. And then just like Radiator Springs, when I-ten is built, that commerce moves out of Buckeye. And since then, with a four-lane configuration, what lasting has, has stayed in the downtown area from a business perspective? It's not to knock anything that is, that is here. There's been some really, really cool concepts that have come in, some awesome restaurants that just when you get used to them and really start to appreciate them, then, then they pack up and something else comes in. And if we continue to do the exact same thing, we're gonna get the exact same thing that we've always got. If you always do what you always did, you always get what you always got. And this opportunity and what we're trying to accomplish is creating a different environment that isn't the pass-through and it's not forcing people on, on Google Maps to drive through here. But it's, it's creating a destination, not a pass-through. Can, can you go back to the, the, it's not quite an aerial view, but it's the view you had, I think it was discussion point five back that is the live pic. Where, where was that? That right there on the left? Do you know what community that is?
It's a community outside Denver.
Okay. So the, that's not a folks passing through. What's gonna be the pass-through of the? What's going to be the pass through or the passer around the area is going to be State Route 30 that is in the first phase of, at least the planning is in the first phase of the Prop 479 infrastructure improvements. That's a, that's a parallel freeway to I-10 that's going to be a, a mile or two south of us. That is what's going to carry people back and forth to, to Hila Bend or to the freeway that gets to Hila Bend, or it's going to carry people back and forth commuting into Metro Phoenix. But what we're trying to accomplish is that, which is destination, slowing people down. It's, it is creating that, that walkable, it's deliberate and it's creating that walkable community. And it's not for, it, it's, it's not for the pass through commerce type businesses. It is the, this is where I'm going to hang out for the evening with family. Or this is the date night restaurants, or I live right behind these locations or up in, in the top of one of these. And I can go out of my house and walk down to a different restaurant or a shop or something that exists along Monroe. And if, if you have the, the two lanes in each direction, the four lane concept, you, you continue to have that same, the truck traffic, the, the, always what you've had in downtown Buckeye. And I, I can see the, and it looks like the businesses, both Main Street and Chamber of Commerce are chiming in about the third lane added in, which is what this depicts here, giving you those left turn movements and not, not stopping the traffic behind people that are trying to turn left into a, an area that doesn't have that dedicated turn lane. I can see that being a kind of middle of the road. And, yeah. No pun intended, really, that just came out just like that. Kind of a compromise, I guess, between the four lane and the two lane, providing better access, cleans up the, the back, the perceived backups that happen when, when folks are trying to turn left into whatever business it, it is today or in the future. And, and might be a compromise that, and maybe it's another trial that, that we go through over the next several years with a, with another paint, what did you call our, our interim test case or? It's like a pilot project out here, yeah.
That's a great idea. It still gives people mobility to move around, it still brings the sidewalks out.
Yeah.
To what people want. And I think that'd be the, the better option for the community. But what we have now is, it's, it's just not working.
Yeah, there, there's.
Doesn't work. But the third, but the center lane in the middle, I think that would be the best bet.
Yeah.
Yeah. But we also got to remember, we wasn't, we didn't elect ourselves. We were elected by a group of people for us to speak for them. So ultimately, we got to remember that what they want is we got to be their voice. And that's, that's something that, that I have to take in consideration as well.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think, I, I think the, the survey results are interesting. If you just look at the, if you spin back to those, Brian, burn that last concept into your mind. But the, the Greens, if you just look at the Greens, it's a, well, it's a real easy, it's four lanes. But when, when you digest the numbers a little bit, you see that the three lane configuration, that is the first and second choice of the majority, of 87% of the respondents to the, what'd you call it, a convenient survey? Which is the residents saying, three lanes. It, it's either three lanes or, or, there's some skinny enough of the roadway that I think the public is saying, yes, we want that, but we don't quite want two lanes. Majority do not want four lanes, coming back to four lanes. But it's, it's that, I think that compromise in the middle that's the, the sweet spot here.
Well, I think, you know, since we're on a research kick tonight for whatever, in this element, they answered the question that was put to them. Right? He asked the question about roadway wits. They answered the question. No, I think the bigger question was what was included in the DSAP piece. What do you want downtown? You want restaurants, you want entertainment, you want, you know, all of these destination type things. That, again, that's the bigger question, you know? So it, it skinnies down to, you know, you ask, well, how, how wide do you want the road? You know, and to Councilman Barry's point, you know, it was a place you drive through. It's not a place you go and stop. Four lanes, you go through. So then what do we care what businesses go downtown if the goal is to move people through? We want people to come down here. So again, it, it, back to, you know, my long-winded first set of comments. You know, what do we want this to be? What's the vision? You know, do we want a vibrant downtown area where people come and stay and spend money? Or do we want a place where they drive through? We want a place that's convenient transportation wise, or do we want a commerce center? Those are, you know, those are those bigger issues that this, how we address this is going to drive the rest of that conversation. You know, if we say four lanes, all right. But then there goes the entertainment pieces because it's a place to drive through. So, you know, it, it, how we ask these questions, and this is a very small piece of a much bigger picture. And this shouldn't be driving what we want that vision to be, or we change the vision.
I think where the mayor was getting at, what would it take to re-stripe it with the center lane in the middle? Is that, would that be super expensive just to do a trial?
Councilmember Mayor, we preliminarily forecasted that cost upwards of $700,000 to $1 million to obliterate the striping, down a layer and re-stripe it again.
And how many years we're looking for to do the infrastructure on the, how many years out?
Again, that depends on decisions made by this council on budget and the timeline of which projects would get priority in CIP, but four to six years for permanent reconstruction. Get through the DCR process, the funding that would come along with the Storm sewer project, take some time. Mayor, I did, if, if I may, I neglected to mention that next steps beyond this, you have an incredibly difficult job as a council. Next most important difficult job is for me to distill what you said tonight into an action item at a June or July council meeting, I mean that forward.
It clears mud at this point, right? I, I think there's probably some decisions we have to make. I don't know if we'll get to that in the next five minutes here. But is it, is it an immediate change from the two lane configure, is it staying two lane? Is it immediate change from two lane to spend in $700,000 to $1 million on a three lane? Or is it a, is it a wait until we have the infrastructure projects going? And then at that time, it's the wholesale change that takes it to the three lane, which could be two years, it could be, it could be five to six years, depending on when we allocate the money for the drainage improvements and the utility redo in the downtown.
Mayor's office, one thing we could do is provide a memorandum to the council and outline.
Okay. Any other comments for, on tonight?
Can I just ask a kind of a foundational question? I think I've just been assuming, and maybe some others are, have as well, that if we reduce the lanes, that they're, that's more business friendly. Is there, as a planner, it's more, you're bailiwick in mind, is there support statistically from studies, from actions across the country in prior situations like this to support the fact that if you do this type of configuration, that it actually does encourage businesses to come and people to come?
Mayor, Councilor Hagistad, absolutely. I don't know that we call out those studies in the downtown specific area plan, but that's the best practices feedback that we received. You, first you set the vision before we talk about number of lanes. What do we want? We want calmer streets, we want quieter streets. And the reduction of lanes, still able to accommodate the traffic that needs to go through that section. Least amount of number, least of lanes possible that is supported. I could provide maybe some of those figures. I don't have specific studies or it's anecdotal at this point. But the experts that come in and help us develop the plan and help the community sort of translate their vision through those images that are in the book, that's based on our practice and other.
Okay, so it, it is supported. It's, it's probably a bit of art and science. But there is support from other communities who have done similar things. And this is the recommendation of, based upon those studies, to whittle this down to two to three, two to three lanes. And that will, in, in the past, has encouraged more development in downtowns or areas like this. That's correct?
Correct.
Okay, thank you, that's what I needed to know.
Yesterday, reference, if you'd ever want to do it, from St. Louis originally. The city has a street called Gravoy's. That's a north-south running street. The last time I was back there shocked me that they went from four lanes with parking on both sides to three lanes, giving them more space for sidewalks. And it's a section that is 90% businesses. Some of them tile companies, some of them more or less not as much walking and traffic. But the whole section for several miles surprised me. I even took some pictures of it because that was when we were first talking and debating about ours down here. But if you'd want to check with the city of St. Louis about the city street called Gravoy's and see what kind of results they've got for their, I mean, and it's a major traffic street. And it just shocked me, the fact that the businesses along there are just thriving. They've got more parking along there. So it might be something that if you're wanting to ask a little bit about that question there, you might be able to talk to somebody back there. Because it's quite a big change. I'd never seen and heard of anything like that before.
Just one other anecdote, and then we can knock it off. The Main Street Conference that we had gone to, they had a list of award winners, three different projects, I think it was three, that were, were award winners for, you know, best design of Main Street and, and what, the fruits that they were seeing from what they had invested in. And every single one of those had reduced lanes down to, it was one lane in each direction or one lane with a, a turn in the center in each direction. It was all about slowing that traffic down, going through the, what is the main core, that, that heritage or old town area in each one of those. So I thought that was, that was interesting also.
Mayor, seems like the common thread there and a lot of those winners and other communities that service best, best practices is the experience for the resident, the visitor and what they're going for. Or some communities take that to an extreme. They close down segments of their road and end up netting high-end restaurants and those types of businesses that want that.
Right, yep. Okay, any other comments or questions? Great, great discussion. Good luck with making the decision there, Brian. A recommendation.
No, no, Mayor, thank you.
Okay, council, that's the end of 2B. Item number three, with nothing else on the agenda, we are adjourned.